Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to this regularly scheduled meeting of the Waterloo City Council this Monday, April 1st. We have a great crowd in-house tonight and hopefully a bunch of folks watching on our public access television, so welcome to all of you. We're going to start tonight by Madam Clerk, if you'd read the roll, please.
Ms. Cole?
Here.
Mr. Getty?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Greenwood?
Here.
Mr. Schmidt?
Here.
Mr. Walper?
Here.
Very good, thank you. And if each of you would please join me in standing for a moment of silent prayer or reflection. Thank you very much. We are going to be graced this evening by our city attorney is going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Walsh, please.
Would you all please join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance to our flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. You may be seated. Mr. Mayor, are you supposed to do that now? Yes, go ahead. Mr. Hart?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve an amended agenda, and the only amendment we have is the deletion of 1A5. And that was a representative came in today with penalty fee and acknowledged settlement agreement. Also with the approval of the amended agenda, I move that we approve the minutes of March 25th regular session as proposed.
Take it. Counsel, do you have any questions or concerns regarding the agenda of the minutes? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have a lot of fun stuff to take care of before the council meeting tonight, ladies and gentlemen, some proclamations, and we're going to start by swearing in a new police officer. So John Kuntz, John, if you would come forward, please, and bring whoever you'd like with you, or not.
He's got his hands full.
As long as you can raise your right hand.
That's...
(laughing).
Or your left. Okay. John, nice to meet you.
It's a pleasure.
Mrs. Kuntz, I presume.
Buck Clark, nice to meet you guys.
Yes.
We're going to, here, come around this way so that you're kind of facing the crowd here. We're going to swear in a new police officer today, John Kuntz, and I'm going to ask Chief Trelka to give us a little background about John and who he is and where he's from, et cetera, so we all get to know him a little better.
Well, I'm going to introduce John and his wife, Alicia. I always like to get the families involved because when you become a law enforcement officer, you become a part of a larger family. It's quite a fraternity, and we're very proud of the job our police officers do here in Waterloo and all the activity they have to engage in. But John most recently came from Storm Lake where he was a detective and he was a member of the Storm Lake Police Department for 10 years. And John has a master degree from Bellevue University, and he's here with his wife and two small children, and we welcome John to the community.
Very good, very good. And now, John, I am going to read an oath of office, and I would like you to repeat after me if you would, please. Raise your right hand. Aye, and state your name, please.
Aye, John Kuntz.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And I will faithfully and impartially...
And I will faithfully and impartially...
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties...
Discharge all the duties.
Of the position of police officer.
Of the position of police officer.
In the city of Waterloo.
In the city of Waterloo.
Blackhawk County, Iowa.
Blackhawk County, Iowa.
As now or hereafter required by law.
As now or hereafter required by law.
John, congratulations.
Thank you.
Very good.
(applause). And I'm going to have you present it to him since he's joining this family and you're all a part of it.
Very good.
Congratulations, John.
Thank you, guys, very much. Appreciate it.[367.88][367.88](applause). We always have some fun stuff that comes from Carol Luce with her kids, so Carol, you guys are up next, and this is going to be a presentation by Blessed Maria Assunta Pilata Catholic School students and Carol Luce, and it's a community service project, and you...
It's a service learning project.
Okay, service learning project, and you picked our animal control department to do this.
That's correct.
What a great, great topic, and we're looking forward to it.
What we'd like to do first is have the students all introduce themselves, and then we'll go into a little bit of our presentation.
Perfect.
And again, my name is Carol Luce. I have the great fortune to work with the students at Blessed Maria Assunta Pilata Middle School, and they will now introduce themselves.
Very good.
Jay Fleischner.
Lauren Roberts.
Thomas Evans.
Megan Neal.
Eli Olmstead.
Penago.
Thank you. Again, Mayor Clark and council members, we are excited to be here today to present to you a service learning project that the students have picked all on their own. You talk about proactive citizens, here they are. They're working for you. This group of students looked at their community and picked the issue of animal abuse. They voted on what they'd like to do, they networked with an agency such as your Animal Service Control Agency, and they came up with an action plan that they will talk to you a little bit about. What they do in a service learning project is take what they're learning in the classroom and apply it to real-life need. Over at Blessed Maria Assunta Pilata, all the students have the capability of using their iPads. So brochures were designed, calling cards were designed, and a coloring book was designed, all by the students, taking what they're learning in the classroom and applying it to a real need. I will now have the students talk to you a little bit about their project.
Here's what we have learned about the issue of animal abuse. This is everywhere and is an issue locally due to Caleb. Caleb was a dog who was found on the side of the road on Independence Avenue. He was stuck in a kennel to die. He had no food, no water, was stuck in his feces, and they left him there to die, and he eventually did. Our law states that an animal only needs food, water, and enough room to stand up, lay down, and turn around, and that law needs to be reviewed. Our law does not state that an animal ever has to be walked, taken out of a kennel, taken off a chain, or brought into a nice warm house. People should speak up if you know for sure an animal is being abused. We have two agencies in Blackhawk County working on this issue, the Humane Society and the Waterloo Animal Control Services. We learned that there are two numbers to call if you need help with an animal. The numbers are Monday through Friday, 8 through 5, 319-235-5335. After 5:00 PM and on weekends, 319-291-4440, or 319-464-5613.
We think our service learning project can make a difference on the issue of animal abuse in the following ways. That our local officials will look at our laws concerning animals. That our information will get the word out, help others understand the problem, teach others to care for their animals, and get others to help with the issue. And so that people will know what numbers to call for help.
This project has lessons for all ages. We hope this will raise some awareness. This is what we hope how our project will do to help the animals of the city of Waterloo. That the laws will be reviewed and possibly changed to protect and help all animals. That people have a better understanding on this issue. And that our local citizens take more proactive approach on this issue.
That more adoptions will take place. That this project will help to keep the animals safer, and that the number of puppy meals goes down in our state.
We had a collection and fundraiser for animal control services, and many household items that we collected can help animal control services with their efforts. We would like to present a check in the amount of $250 to be used in helping the animal control services. Maria Tiller, can you please come up?
Thank you.[730.28][730.28](applause).
This project is not just about domestic animals that are being abused. We created a calling card brochure on animal neglect and cruelty, and one on proper bedding on animals. Created a coloring book on animal care. We learned a lot and had fun. Every person has a voice and can help to make changes. Everyone can do something to help.
Do we have any questions?[778.12][778.12](laughing).
Counsel, do you have any questions of this group? I have a question of Ms. Luce. How do you get such talented kids in your programs? Wow.
It's the leader in them. We are a leader in me school. We work off of the seven habits of highly effective teens, and the very first habit is?
Be proactive.
Which means take responsibility. In our students, that's what they do. They take responsibility. It is driven by them, it is chosen by them, and is worked by them. So that basically shows you that when they get behind a project that they truly believe, there's nothing that can stop them. They are very proactive students.
Ms. Cole, you got a question?
Yes, I would like to ask the young man who was just there, what was the most important thing you learned during this project?
I'd say the most important thing I learned is that three dogs die every minute from animal abuse. Three dogs every minute. There are 525,600 minutes in a year. That's a lot of dogs.[858.04][858.04](laughing).
Thank you.[861.84][861.84](applause). The calling card Maria will use will be used as she goes out into the public so she can give that card to individuals so that they know what number to call during the day, and what number to call at night, and what number to call on the weekend. So hopefully that will clear up any issues that our community citizens may have. The coloring book is to use so that students know the proper care for animals, and we were just informed that, how many copies?
400.
400 are already being requested to be put out in the community, and that's just the beginning, so that will get that word out. The other two brochures are for Maria to use as she talks about animal neglect and proper bedding, and again, they were all done by the students.
Wow, fabulous.
Thank you for your service to the city of Waterloo and for your time for letting us present to you today.
Thank you again.
Thank you.[935.04][935.04](applause).
Okay, we have our first proclamation tonight. I know that Sam Runyon and Kathy Albert are here. If you guys would like to come up, and Bob, you're there, if you'd like to come up also, that would be great. Oh, you're the photographer. Well, why don't you guys just get here? Okay? Let's make it a surprise, just a second. Yeah, let's make it a surprise. Hi, Sam. Good to see you. Good, good. Our first proclamation tonight is proclaiming Fair Housing Month, and we have Bob Reisinger and Sam Runyon and Kathy Albert joining us tonight. City of Waterloo, Iowa proclamation, whereas April 11th, 2013 marks the 45th anniversary of the passage of the United States Fair Housing Law, Title VIII of the Civil Rights Act of 1968 as amended, which enunciates a national policy of fair housing without regard to race, color, creed, national origin, sex, familial status, and handicap, and encourages fair housing opportunities for all citizens. And whereas the city of Waterloo, as well as the Waterloo Cedar Falls Board of Realtors, are committed to highlight the Fair Housing Law, Title VIII of the Civil Rights Act of 1968, by continuing to address discrimination in our community, to support programs that will educate the public about the right to equal housing opportunities, and to plan partnership efforts with other organizations to help assure every American of their right to fair housing. Now, therefore, I, Buck Clark, Mayor of the City of Waterloo, Iowa, do hereby proclaim April 2013 as Fair Housing Month, which begins a year-long commemoration of the United States Fair Housing Law in Waterloo, and urge all citizens to wholeheartedly recognize this celebration throughout the entire year. So who gets this?
I guess we're both.
You both take it? Okay, let me get a microphone, and I think we've got some fun things tonight here. Here, I'm going to put this through here. I'll let Sam and Kathy make the presentation.
I don't know how much more fun we can have than what we just had.
How do you follow that?
I wish Kathy and I had a half a dozen young children to be up here with us.
Yeah.
Actually, the fair housing goes hand in hand with another celebration that the Board of Realtors, actually the National Association had last year, was the, oh, it's this year, 2013 is the 100-year anniversary of the Code of Ethics for Realtors. Some people don't really think Realtors have a code of ethics, but we really do, very stringent, and the Fair Housing Month and proclamation goes hand in hand with the Code of Ethics, and most Realtors, all Realtors, have to take continuing education classes on the Code of Ethics. It's a requirement, and also the fair housing, and we have classes that we attend on that. With that in hand, last year, coincidentally, 100-year anniversaries, last year was the 100th year anniversary of our Waterloo Cedar Falls Board of Realtors, and we have put together to present to the city a photo collage to explain this. Each, this is 100 years of houses being built in the cities of Waterloo, Cedar Falls. These are 100 homes that actually sold in the year 2012, and that was the year Kathy was president of our board. So, and it's very interesting, at least it's interesting to us, if you go through there, you will look at some of these houses, and they will probably be in your own neighborhoods.
Yeah.
So we're going to present that to the city. We hope you can find a nice place to hang it.
We will find a very nice place to put this, very prominently, somewhere in City Hall.
And here, we will call the legend or ledger, that will tell you the addresses of every one of those homes. They were, the homes that are up there, the year with them is the year they were built.
Okay.
They were all sold in 2012, and we did that to mark the 100-year anniversary of our local board.
That's incredible. Thank you, guys. This is very, very nice stuff.
Thank you very much.
Very, very nice stuff. So thank you, guys, very much. We will put this very prominently displayed somewhere.
Thank you.
You bet. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.[1204.83][1204.83](applause).
Well, we have Carol's group, and then we have a great plaque, and next we have Rudy Jones, our Community Development Director. Rudy, why don't you come up, please? Carol actually even had a check with her. Rudy, do you have a check?
I have this year.[1242.24][1242.24](laughing).
Are you expecting a check?
Maybe, one of these days.
The proclamation tonight for our National Community Development Week, whereas the Community Development Block Grant Program has operated since 1974 to provide local governments with the resources required to meet the needs of persons of low and moderate income, and CDBG funds are used by thousands of neighborhood-based nonprofit organizations throughout the nation to address pressing neighborhood and human service needs. And whereas the Community Development Block Grant Program has had a significant impact on our local economies through job creation and retention, physical redevelopment, and improved local tax basis. And whereas Waterloo, Iowa, and other local governments have clearly demonstrated the capacity to administer and customize the CDBG program to identify, prioritize, and resolve pressing local problems such as affordable housing, neighborhood and human service needs, job creation and retention, and physical redevelopment. Now, therefore, I, Buck Clark, Mayor of the City of Waterloo, Iowa, do hereby proclaim the week of April 1st through the 6th, 2013, as National Community Development Week in Waterloo, Iowa, and I urge all citizens to join us in recognizing the Community Development Block Grant Program and the important role it plays in our community. Rudy, would you like to say a couple of words?
Couple of words, thank you.
There you go.
Mayor, we would like to thank you and the council for your ever-going support. We also like to thank all of our partners that help us with a lot of the projects that we provide, such as Bob and the Board of Realtors, and I think I saw Bob Prather, who was here earlier, with the Food Bank. Those are some of the partners that we utilize our funds for.
Rudy, thank you, and thank you for what you do for the city.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.[1353.12][1353.12](applause). Forrest Walker and others. Come on up. Mr. Walker?
Hi.
Nice to meet you. Nice to meet you.
How are you, ma'am?
Mrs. Walker, thanks for coming. We are here tonight for this proclamation to celebrate the 20th anniversary of the Phil-Am Association of Blackhawk County. Whereas Filipinos have come to Iowa to pursue professional and personal interests, and those individuals, along with others, desire to have an association where the Filipino culture could be shared and enjoyed by all through friendship and socialization. And whereas, since many Filipinos became married cross-culturally to Americans, it was natural to launch the Phil-Am Association. And whereas, since 1993, the Phil-Am Association of Blackhawk County has successfully served its members, the citizens of Waterloo, Iowa, and the Cedar Valley by keeping the traditions and culture of the Filipino people alive in our community. Whereas, the Phil-Am Association of Blackhawk County has provided culturally themed events designed to share the cultural significance of the Philippine Islands with its members and those of the Cedar Valley... Mabahi?
Mabuhay.
Mabuhay. What is mabuhay?
It's a nationalistic term to mean long life and...
Very good. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Buck Clark, Mayor of the City of Waterloo, Iowa, do hereby proclaim April 6th, 2013, as the date of celebration for the 20th anniversary of the Phil-Am Association of Blackhawk County. And I will present this to you and ask you to say a couple of words about your association, please.
I came to know the Philippines during my Peace Corps service a number of years ago. So it's been a labor of love and also family, having a wife that's also from the Philippines. Coming to this community and realizing that there was such a large and robust Filipino presence was also a blessing to us. And there are about, in fact, 200 or so families, with family members included, in the community. Many of the individuals here are in the medical community and are prominent doctors within the community or have involvement with the medical community, my wife being a nurse and a supervisor in her area at Covenant. And so we are indeed happy to have this 20th anniversary celebration. It is on Saturday, the 6th, at 5:00 PM, and we're most pleased to have you join us, Mayor, certainly.
Thank you, sir. I will be there.
In presenting this proclamation. Thank you so much, and we appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much.[1558.91][1558.91](applause). You know, ladies and gentlemen, this is just one more reminder of the rich and diverse culture that we share in Waterloo with so many other nationalities, and, you know, we try very hard to embrace that and celebrate that. It is to our benefit always that we do that, and we're very fortunate to have those associations. And now, Stephen Gaze, right? Stephen Gaze, come up, please. I should know that, this is the third year or fourth year that we've been doing this. Nice to, good to see you. This is our last proclamation of the evening, and it's to celebrate the Days of Remembrance. Whereas the Holocaust was the state-sponsored systematic persecution and annihilation of European Jewry by Nazi Germany and its collaborators between 1933 and 1945. Jews were the primary victims. Six million were murdered. Roma, gypsies, people with disabilities, and Poles also were targeted for destruction or decimation for racial, ethnic, or national reasons. Millions more, including homosexuals, Jehovah's Witnesses, Soviet prisoners of war, and political dissidents also suffered grievous oppression and death under Nazi tyranny. And whereas, the history of the Holocaust offers an opportunity to reflect on the moral responsibilities of individuals, societies, and governments. And whereas, we the people of the city of Waterloo should always remember the terrible events of the Holocaust and remain vigilant against hatred, persecution, and tyranny. And whereas, we the people of the city of Waterloo should actively rededicate ourselves to the principles of individual freedom in a just society. And whereas, the Days of Remembrance have been set aside for the people of the city of Waterloo to remember the victims of the Holocaust as well as to reflect on the need for respect of all peoples. And whereas, pursuant to an act of Congress, this was Public Law 96-388, on October 7th, 1980, the United States Holocaust Memorial Council designates the Days of Remembrance of the victims of the Holocaust to be Sunday, April 7th through April 14th, 2013, including the Day of Remembrance known as Yom Hashoah, April 8th, 2013. Now, therefore, I, Buck Clark, Mayor of the City of Waterloo, do hereby proclaim the week of Sunday, April 7th through Sunday, April 14th, 2013, as Days of Remembrance, in memory of the victims of the Holocaust and in honor of the survivors, as well as the rescuers and liberators, and further proclaim that we, as citizens of the city of Waterloo, should strive to promote human dignity and confront hate whenever and wherever it occurs. Give you the microphones, Stephen.
Thank you, Mayor Clark, members of the council. This Sunday evening, in the lobby of Gallagher Blue Door and Performing Arts Center, we'll be having our 7th annual Holocaust Remembrance Ceremony in the Cedar Valley. Members of the council have been at previous ceremonies, and Mayor Clark spoke a few years ago, and we're very pleased that he'll be back and make some remarks this year. The theme of this year's Days of Remembrance and the theme of our ceremony is never again heeding the warning signs. And it struck me as I was listening to the other proclamations that some of the very things that we're proclaiming this week and this month, fair housing, making sure everyone... things that we're proclaiming this week and this month, fair housing, making sure everyone gets equal opportunity, recognition and respect of people from different backgrounds who've all come here to make good lives for themselves. These are the very things that we want to see in our world, and the very things that the Nazi regime nullified in post-war Germany. So it's a ceremony that recognizes victims of the past, but also looks at ourselves today and looks forward to the future, and that's why we invite all residents of Cedar Falls and Waterloo to come and join us next Sunday evening at 7:00 in Gallagher Bludorn. Thank you again very much.[642.82][642.82](applause).
All right. Thank you, council, and thank you, everyone in the audience. Those were... That's good stuff that we're recognizing tonight.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Hart?
I'd like to move that we receive, place, on file, and approve the consent agenda, Items 1A through B20. Also with the approval of the consent agenda, I move that we pay our bills, which will be read by our finance chair.
Bills this week are $721,918.87. That's 721,918.87.
Second. Counsel, do you have any questions or concerns regarding our consent agenda tonight? Madam Clerk, it's a roll call. Vote, please.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welfer?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Very good. The motion carries. Item number two, please, counsel.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Schmidt?
Item number two, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication and notice of public hearing, and that's for the development agreement with Laura and Mike Hoy to sell and convey 335 Almond Street for $5,000.
Second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and the hearing is now open. Madam Clerk, do we have any written objections on file regarding this item? Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak either for or against this item? Second time?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to close the hearing.
Second. Counsel, do you have any questions or concerns? Mr. Schmidt?
Mr. Mayor, I would just like to mention that I've had some dealings with Mrs. Hoy and a couple of her parishioners from Orchard Hill Church and also Harvest Vineyard Church, the work they've been doing in the Walnut Neighborhood Association for the last couple of years, and I think this is just another step they're taking over there, and I think it'll just continue to help that neighborhood through a rebirth. So I'm very supportive of this.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Schmidt. Hearing nothing further. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt a resolution authorizing said sale and conveyance and authorize city attorney to prepare and deliver deed accordingly.
Second. It's a roll call. Vote, please, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welfer?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Motion carries. Mike and Laura, congratulations. When's the housewarming? We all want invitations. Congratulations. Let's do resolutions, please, 3, 4, and 5.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Greenwood.
Number three is a resolution approving professional service agreement with AECOM for the designing and bidding services for the Waterloo Eastern Water Pollution Control Facility belt press addition in the amount of $160,000. Authorize the mayor to execute that said document. And four is a resolution approving a PSA with AECOM for the designing and bidding services for the miscellaneous equipment and piping replacement at the Eastern Water Pollution Control Facility, the amount of $15,000. Authorize the mayor to execute said document. And five is a resolution approving recommendation of award of a bid to Vermeer of Eastern Iowa out of Tipton, Iowa, in the amount of $49,250 minus the $20,000 trade for a net total price of $29,250 for the purchase of a 2013 stump cutter.
Second. Counsel, do you have any questions regarding 3, 4, or 5? Madam Clerk, it's a roll call. Vote, please.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welfer?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welfer?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Motion carries. Mike and Laura, congratulations. When's the housewarming? We all want invitations. Congratulations. Let's do resolutions, please, 3, 4, and 5.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Greenwood.
Number three is a resolution approving professional service agreement with AECOM for the designing and bidding services for the Waterloo Eastern Water Pollution Control Facility belt press addition in the amount of $160,000. Authorize the mayor to execute that said document.
And four is a resolution approving a PSA with AECOM for the designing and bidding services for the miscellaneous equipment and piping replacement at the Eastern Water Pollution Control Facility, the amount of $15,000. Authorize the mayor to execute said document.
And five is a resolution approving recommendation of award of a bid to Vermeer of Eastern Iowa out of Tipton, Iowa, in the amount of $49,250 minus the $20,000 trade for a net total price of $29,250 for the purchase of a 2013 stump cutter.
Second. Counsel, do you have any questions regarding 3, 4, or 5? Madam Clerk, it's a roll call. Vote, please.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welfer?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Motion carries. Mike and Laura, congratulations. When's the housewarming? We all want invitations. Congratulations. Let's do resolutions, please, 3, 4, and 5.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Greenwood.
Number three is a resolution approving professional service agreement with AECOM for the designing and bidding services for the Waterloo Eastern Water Pollution Control Facility belt press addition in the amount of $160,000. Authorize the mayor to execute that said document. And four is a resolution approving a PSA with AECOM for the designing and bidding services for the miscellaneous equipment and piping replacement at the Eastern Water Pollution Control Facility, the amount of $15,000. Authorize the mayor to execute said document. And five is a resolution approving recommendation of award of a bid to Vermeer of Eastern Iowa out of Tipton, Iowa, in the amount of $49,250 minus the $20,000 trade for a net total price of $29,250 for the purchase of a 2013 stump cutter.
Second. Counsel, do you have any questions regarding 3, 4, or 5? Madam Clerk, it's a roll call. Vote, please.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welfer?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welfer?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Motion carries. Counsel, let's do item number six tonight by itself. Mr. Welfer would like to have some conversation about that, so let's take number six by itself, someone.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Getty?
Make a... Adopt a resolution approving memorandum of agreement with the Black Hawk County Health to install an outdoor fitness equipment at Ferguson Fields Park in an amount not to exceed $17,600, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute said document.
Second. Very good. Open up for questions or comments. Mr. Welfer?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to... See, I appreciate Black Hawk County Health and also the Wellmark Foundation, as well as the city, wanting to provide outdoor fitness equipment for people who choose to exercise. However, this is not anything new. About 20 years ago, maybe Mr. Hudding can correct me on that, but about 20 years ago, Allen Hospital did the same thing. They put different exercise equipment stations throughout the areas, I understand. One was placed in Williston Field on the corner of 7th and Pleasant. It was never used. They boarded the equipment with, like, railroad ties, and they filled the area with pea gravel. Of course, the pea gravel was there in case, you know, you fell off the equipment. After about five years, the neighborhood asked that it be removed because it was not being used, and the children were throwing the pea gravel at each other. If you look at what is recommended with the new one, it's calling for a 18-by-26 concrete slab. Talking to Mr. Hudding, he said that they are going to replace that with something soft for people to fall back on. So I appreciate that. If you look also at the ownership of it, it says that the city will maintain and set equipment for about 10 years. So what is about 10 years? At nine years, and it starts to fall apart, is the city now going to replace all the equipment? You know, I don't like the looks of that either. The community... Or, excuse me, the Wellness Foundation is offering a $19,000 grant. I would rather see this group not spend the money on outdoor equipment and possibly use it towards vouchers or some way that people who are serious about exercising will actually use it and use it in fitness centers and possibly our sportsplex. I think spending this money on this outdoor equipment is a waste of money. I think it'd be used more wisely.
Thank you for your comments.
So I will not be supporting this.
Okay. Thank you. Paul, why don't you... Yeah, go ahead and give us your take on what we're doing here, and then if other council have comments, we'll...
Paul Hudding, Leisure Services Director. I guess I would just offer to answer any questions in response to Councilman Welfer's concerns. We have looked carefully at this, and there is a similar apparatus already installed in Cedar Falls, kind of near the mud group in Prairie Park. We feel it'll be very durable, will easily last 10 years. It's basically tubular steel on concrete. The surfacing would be similar to what's just been installed at the Spray Park, at Marks Park, if anyone's familiar with that. So from a durability standpoint, we think it's something that should easily last that amount of time. From the use standpoint, there will be signage installed that will instruct people exactly how to properly use the equipment. We've also looked at it from a safety standpoint, as far as the playground safety guidelines, and it will meet those, even though it's going to be signed for adult use. It's intended for, I believe, people age 13 and up, but we consider it an adult use. We were contacted by County Health. They, as part of the Blue Zones Initiative and with the help of Wellmark, are trying to do everything possible to improve the health of the entire population, but in this case, adults. So we would like to partner with them to do this project. Certainly understand that there have been apparatuses constructed and removed in the past. Most of those were made of wood and eventually fell apart. We don't feel this one will have that problem. As far as the use, hopefully County Health and the signage will help to program that and actually have people out there using it. That's our intent, anyway. So I'd answer any other questions if you have any.
Thanks, Mr. Hudding. Counsel, do you have any other comments or questions of Mr. Hudding at all?
I do.
Mr. Hart?
Not of Mr. Hudding, if I could just make some more comments.
Thanks, Paul. Thank you.
I'm kind of surprised by Ron's comments, because if you take a look at Ferguson Field, one of the comments he made was putting it someplace where people are serious about wellness. And you take a look at that park, and it's right in a location of several different churches in that area with senior citizens. A lot of the activities that some of those churches want to do, they actually walk over to that particular field, Ferguson Field. If you take a look on our National Night Out, that's one of the most-used places for our National Night Out. If you talk to the residents or the neighborhood group in that area, they would like to see some change in that area. If you take a look down the street, about three blocks you have where they hold college classes, they also hold CNA classes, and students can use that park as well. You take a look at the school, schoolchildren can use that park. So if you're not over there and you haven't seen what the head count is on a day-to-day basis, how can you say that people aren't serious about wellness? So I believe it's a good partnership. I am 150% behind this Blue Zone initiative. I am in support of them providing extra help and putting fitness equipment in all of our parks around the community. A little while ago, Dr. Mary Robinson approached the council, and she showed a census tract where we talked about obesity in various places of our community. This location is a prime location for physical fitness activities, and I would hate that this is not supported 7-0 by the entire council, because it's necessary, it's needed, and from what I've seen, the council is behind this Blue Zone initiative in partnering with parks. So I think it's a great opportunity for the community, and I think it's one of many partnerships that are going to take place here over the next several years.
Thank you, Mr. Hart. Anybody else?
Mr. Mayor, five mayors.
Sure.
I hope... Mr. Hart, I hope I'm wrong. I can tell you that by reading the information, it says this is the first of these fitness centers that are going to be built. So I don't know where all they're planning on putting these, but if you were to look at the two parks that are in our Neighborhood Association, Triangle Park on 7th and Allen, all the playground equipment has been removed. If you go to Levitt Triangle Park on 9th and Williston, again, all the playground equipment has been removed. Harold, help me with the name of the gentleman who designed all the parks, theme parks. What is it?
Kowalski.
Kowalski?
Leonard Kowalski.
Okay. All his theme parks are pretty much gone. The reason that they're gone was because of safety reasons, because of the liability situation that we have with our city. Paul showed me what this looks like. I see what this is, is a liability to the city. I would much rather they spend the money with these people using our fitness centers, such as our sportsplex. It's just my point.
Of course, Ron, I'd make a comment on that, that, you know, with Leonard Kowalski and the parks that he built and so forth, at the time, they were great, they fit into Waterloo very well, but we're talking 25 years ago. So a lot has moved forward with construction and safety for the kids.
I was wondering why he asked you that question, Harold.
Because the old man, the council...[1544.13][1544.13](laughter).
But I'm one of those parents, I still like to take my children outside to a nice park so they can play outside instead of being indoors all day. If you take a look at all the work that Eric Thorson has done with the state on creating walking trails, bike trails throughout this community, if you take a look at this Blue Zone initiative, it's trying to get people, not just in fitness places, but it's trying to get people outside walkable communities. And I think this is, as you said, one of the first, and I'm hoping of many opportunities that we have to make our community that type of community. So I understand the liability, but also see it as an even greater opportunity to improve the quality of life in our communities and in our neighborhoods. So I'm definitely in support of this project.
Very good. Anybody else?
Call for a question.
Very good, I will. Good arguments for both sides. Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welfer?
No.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Very good. The motion does carry. Let's do 7, 8, and 9, please, counsel.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Hart.
I move to adopt a resolution approving West 8th Street Railroad Crossing Surface Repair Agreement with the Iowa Department of Transportation and the Iowa Northern Railway Company for the installation of a 45 lineal-foot concrete surface crossing at the West 8th Street Railroad Crossing. And number eight, I move to adopt a resolution approving West 7th Street Railroad Crossing Surface Repair Agreement with Iowa Department of Transportation and the Iowa Northern Railway Company for the installation of a 90 lineal-feet concrete surface crossing at the West 7th Street Railroad Crossing. And number nine, I move to adopt a resolution approving construction plans and sanitary sewer serving United Medical Park South Sanitary Sewer Extension as submitted by VJ Engineering of Cedar Falls, Iowa, and sewage treatment agreement, DNR Form 29, parentheses, November 00, 2000, I believe, with the Department of Natural Resources and the final acceptance
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, council members, for entertaining my comments on item number 10. My name is Pete Hush with Hy-Vee Corporate Offices. My address is 5820 West Town Parkway, West Des Moines, Iowa. We're not here in opposition of the resolution as set forth tonight. We feel it's appropriate to review and study the area as thoroughly as possible as part of this redevelopment project along University Avenue. We do want to go on record as stating that we do not support a design that results in roundabout, specifically with roundabouts at the location of Progress Avenue and its impact on our proposed project at Tunis, which is a convenience store with a associated coffee, drive-through, and sit-down facility. We have gone through the city approval process and have submitted building plans for construction of that facility. We had actually altered our design and scaled back the overall proposal, removing some retail early on in the process, as we had discussions with the DOT and with the city relative to what was envisioned along the corridor and how it was going to be reconstructed and further review. The scenario, including roundabouts, came to our attention, and obviously, the resolution tonight is to adopt that study area, which we fully support. But the application of a roundabout at Progress Drive would result in the limitation of our outbound movement at Tunis associated with our convenience store. That causes us great pause relative to construction at that location and our overall plans with our facility at Progress Drive going forward in the future. We do have plans to expand that facility, but with the application of roundabouts along a retail corridor, we're concerned about how traffic will flow in the area and how that will be implemented and adopted by the community. We've also, you know, we have properties in Cedar Falls that are going to be impacted by this scenario as well, so we would be in opposition of roundabouts in that portion of the city as well, and have taken steps to actually reposition ourselves relative to some of our retail facilities there. But specifically relative to Waterloo, we're impacted here at the location of Progress and then also Tunis. So understand, we support the resolution, but hope that you take into consideration the impact of companies who are looking to reinvest in the corridor going forward in your overall design and review of the project going forward.
Thank you very much. Other questions from counsel? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to add some final comments to item number 10?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Getty?
All this is saying is that we're approving a recommendation of preliminary impact.
That's correct.
That doesn't say we're going to put in a...
That is correct.
Thank you.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Schmidt?
I know we had a work session on this previously, but, you know, I think there are a lot of folks in the audience, and certainly the folks in the audience at home that didn't see this. Could we have somebody from the engineering department just kind of give a little bit of an overview of what it is we're actually voting on tonight? I think that'd be appropriate.
Eric, could you do that, please?
Eric Thorson, city engineer. The, well, a little history. Waterloo and Cedar Falls and the DOT have been working on University for many years to improve that corridor, and we all know that needs some improvement, especially the pavement condition. There was a corridor study done previously. That has been completed. We've now moved into the environmental assessment process, and as part of that process, they have to look at areas along the corridor that could be impacted by any improvements that are made. And we're basically asking the city council tonight to endorse a wider footprint that would allow basically any type of improvements that we could come up with. That could include roundabouts, could be signalization. Those decisions have not been made yet, but we want to have the largest area studied for the environmental purposes so that we have the most room to work.
Thank you, Mr. Thorson. Anyone else? There's been a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, it's a roll call. Vote, please.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
The motion's carry. Let's do the last three resolutions, please, counsel.